Whether we take up one of the amendments, pass it, whether we do nothing, pass it, or whether we defer action altogether, I just want the council to know that we're not going to push this for final adoption until we've worked through whatever issues are out there.
And that's the whole spirit of intro and adoption. You got those two weeks to take care of unfinished business. So it's three weeks in this case, yeah. So, you know, but again, these are options to be considered. Mr. Robidoux has made a commitment as it relates to addressing those issues. Mr. Terrio?
Yes, and look, I appreciate what you just mentioned there. This is really not that complicated, and we're making it complicated. If we pass Mr. Bellard's amendment tonight, and it passes, fine. In two weeks, the exact same amendment, or whenever it is, the exact same amendment can be brought back up, added on with this exception, that exception, and that exception.
Right.
Our amendment. It's real simple, guys. We've done this a million times before. If we pass it tonight, and whenever it comes back up for final, we can just say, hey, you know what? What we amended last time? We can add it back, and we can add what Ms. Abert wants. We can add what Mr. Nakken wants, and we can add what the administration wants. So that's all I have to say. I support taking it out right now regardless if the administration, if you get it done in that timeframe, it's the same thing. But this just solves the problem tonight. If we vote to move forward, other than that, this will die and it'll stay in as is. So would you agree with that, Mr. Esq?
If it's taken out tonight, at final, if they address all the questions, it's out. Even if they address it, it would have to be put back in. It would require another amendment.
Yeah, you can make an amendment. But what's easy is that if we vote to take it out tonight, what's easy, we can just say, we have an amendment at final to add everything back in we took out two weeks ago with the additional amendments that other council members may have. So...
I don't think so. You see, we was in agreement all night tonight. And I don't agree with that.
I don't know. Mr. Esq. got to agree. Mr. Esq. got to agree with me. It's not that difficult.
If we leave it as is tonight, which would be easiest, and in two weeks, if what you want hasn't been provided, then you amended. That's the easiest thing.
No.
Because you only amended it once. If you take it out and they put it back, there's two amendments. If you leave it in tonight as is, and then they, Mr. Robidoux don't stand by his commitment, and the department don't act, well, then you take it out.
Well, and that's fine. That's fine. I would say, let's, like you mentioned, Mr. Chair, let's just move forward and let's roll the dice.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Any other council discussion?
What about...
Let's see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I was about to come to you. Yes, sir.
I was simply gonna remind the chair that you've called Mr. Mahan to speak on the amendment, but I think we had two other blue cards that...
Yes, sir. Oh, I wasn't going to vote yet. No, no. I wasn't going to vote yet. We just had the discussion based on the last comments Mr. Mahan made, and then everybody had something. But we're gonna, we have a number of blue cards to address. Then we have to address that amendment itself before we go beyond that. And if some other amendments come up, or somebody changed their mind, we got a lot of options. No, not at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, because, well, I guess Mr. Esq. did not fully address that. Mr. Nakken is asking about the amendment, and that's what I proposed to you, and I think Mr. Robidoux brought it back up. But from a legal standpoint, is there a preference or an advising on voting on Mr. Bellard's amendment first before allowing others? I could tell you from my experience as chair in the past, we have never stopped amendments. We have allowed, we have allowed people to place amendments as they see fit, and then we voted from the last one forward. So we took up, just like we took up the initial one that was proposed by the department that has been dealt with already. So the only thing that is pending is Mr. Bellard. Through discussions, members come up or hear something that makes them want to do something else, we put it, because they have that right. And then we start with the last one in, and we work our way back down to the actual first one, because typically amendments derive from things that they have heard prior to them making it. Like Mr. Bellard's came after he did some additional reading. Mr. Nakken's considering one based on what he's heard discussed thus far. But of course, I will defer to legal if...
Well, if you're asking me, are you asking me, is there a specific provision in our operating rules that dictate one method or the other? Or are you asking me, is there a preference that I have?
Well, I don't think it's fair to ask your preference. Is there something that restricts an amendment being offered at any time and how we address it?
Okay. Let me, you may have to give me three minutes to check something in my materials.
That's fine.
Okay.
I think it's worth the taking. As a matter of fact, I think staff could go to the restroom and get some water if need be.
We do have a blue card. Want to go to that?
Y'all okay? No, no, council can't go anywhere. Because if not, if the staff don't have to go, what we could do is take up some blue cards. Is the staff okay?
Good.
Okay. Well, let's continue on with blue cards while Mr. Esq. researched that. Mr. Mahan has spoken, and we are still speaking on the amendment.
Electric vehicles.
Right.
And a striking of that verbiage. Next blue card is Robert Gercio.
Good evening. I just wanted to follow up on what Simon Mahan said earlier.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Gercio.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Robert Gercio.
No, 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 you're fine. I just wanted to remind you, because we have a lot of activity going, we're trying our best to stay. Right now, you're speaking to the amendment, okay?
Correct.
Because we're on the second one now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good deal.
Add me five more seconds back, please.
You got it. I'll take care of it.
Following up on what Simon Mahan said, I just wanted to quickly suggest the city consider creating a mass email list, basically to send out the agenda to the city council meeting as soon as it's finalized for people who would like that convenience. I know I'm a very busy business person. I don't have time to get online. I'm on my phone. It don't work so well. So that's a suggestion. Wouldn't cost anything, really. I own several businesses and properties in downtown Lafayette. I'm here to support the city's effort to implement progressive best practices in downtown Lafayette. Thank you for proposing this ordinance. Thank you for offering the amendment. I think it's important to realize in the context of this discussion that we have serious things going on downtown, and I would not want to distract from the heart of this ordinance, which is extremely important for many reasons, by losing focus with the electric car issue. I'll speak more about that in a minute. I highly recommend the city and council consider the creation of a parking benefit district in the CBD. This is a proven financial funding mechanism that fosters faster growth, drastically increases revenues, and directly leads to a more effective use of the funds that are generated. This strategy is also fast becoming a very prevalent national best practice. This investment should be the foundation of an overall effort to leverage city property, parking areas, and related assets to the betterment of all: businesses, the public, property owners, the city, everything, the budget. The revolving fund created by a parking benefit district can be used to offset expenses both small and somewhat large that are always associated with the development of a downtown area. This system of operating creates huge efficiencies and fosters rapid change, which stimulates growth. Our city parish government currently has funding issues related to tax shortfalls.
Mr. Gercio?
Yes, sir.
The amendment only, right now, you broadened it. You did good when you first brought up the not focusing on it, losing sight of that.
Bear with me. It's relevant.
Well, I can't. Well, this is what's happening, because, you know, members are listening for comments on the amendment right now, and you're gonna have an opportunity to speak to the entire ordinance again. We open it up for, we have been advised by legal for the sake of open meetings law.
I'll skip to that.
You could hit the amendment.
Can I reserve the right to speak again?
No, no, you already have the right.
Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, this is just the amendment, and what's gonna happen. After we address all the amendments, because you signed in, you will come back to speak to the whole ordinance.
Okay, great.
As a whole, we just, for the opens meeting law requirement.
I thought it was one or the other.
Uh-uh. No, no. Oh, no, you get, you're in a good night tonight.
Okay. Yeah, everybody's comfortable. Okay.
But what it is, we just want to make sure that as members make changes...
Yes, sir.
...that the public is not excluded. So right now, you could only speak to the change that is being considered. Then you will come back and speak to all the changes that have been made. So if you could just limit it to Mr. Bellard's amendment to eliminate that. Now, you lost your five seconds, I'm telling you, because you...
That's okay. I'm gonna get them back later. I didn't need 10 minutes, but I'm, so I'm good. I support Councilmember Bellard and Councilmember Lewis's amendment, and I think we should not get distracted from implementing this very important ordinance so we can raise some revenues, so we can pay for the security detail, so we can make some great changes in downtown Lafayette, and set a new precedent for progressive best practice implementation. I'll be back.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay.
And finally, Mr. Chair, we did have two citizens who did not wish to speak but signed in in support of the inclusion of electric vehicle provision. So since it's related, I wanted to state that.
Absolutely, yes. Okay. So those are all the blue cards of record now. Okay, all right. So again, the most important thing, we've addressed our blue cards. Our public has been given the opportunity. Councilmembers have spoken to this. Okay. As I indicated in the past, because of how amendments are made, I have allowed amendments to be placed, and then we address them one at a time. So there were a couple of people who was considering amendments. One was Mr. Nakken. Next was Councilmember Abert. So at this point, what I will do is go to Ms. Nakken. Are you prepared to make your amendment at this time? Okay. Mr. Nakken?
My amendment would be to pass the ordinance with the amendment that, at the time, that a charging station or when it relates to the electrical car part, that they would come back to the council for approval. In other words, I want it as is to go through, as it was written with the original amendment. The only stipulation is, at the time that the director is starting to look at locations or identifies where he would like to put them, or what's relevant based upon information from the public, that it would come back to the council approval, come back for council approval at that time to actually vote on where the location would be. That would be my only stipulation.
Okay.
On...
Hold on, hold on.
It would be, basically, if he has identified some locations, that he would have to come back to the council for approval of those locations. And at that time, the council could then pick a different location or whatever. Basically, you'd have to come back to the legislative body.
Got you. Okay. So I understand your amendment, and I'm coming to you, Mr. Esq. I know y'all almost lost it over there. But, Mr. Nakken, to be clear, you're making amendment that the original ordinance that has been proposed goes forward, but your amendment is to mandate that they come back with locations and numbers of locations before putting it into effect?
And data, yes.
All right.
Prioritization.
So hold on to that right there. Mr. Esq.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I guess my only suggestion to make sure that this is clean as possible is that we address the pending amendment of Mr. Bellard, and...
That's what we had just asked. That's what I was referring to.
Right.
And that's when I say stack them, because once we vote on Mr. Bellard's amendment, if it's favorable, then it has to be undone. If it's not favorable, well, it goes away. And that's what I had said. The discussion happens. As we have a discussion, new ideas come up. Mr. Nakken came up with an idea. Ms. Abert heard enough. She came up with an idea. And that's why, is there prohibition from allowing, because every council member could make an amendment for that matter. And what happens is, if we take them up one at a time as they come on, well, then the next person who wanted amended got to undo what just got done. So it's, that's just not what we've done in the past. But I went to try to get the prohibition. So if there is none, we're gonna go this route. If there's something that say we shouldn't do it, or couldn't do it, or is gonna cause us a problem, well, then we need to know that. But...
Right.
The reason for taking up the first one is for what purpose?
Well, let me say this. I guess to provide guidance, nothing more than guidance, or for whatever it's worth, my thoughts on the matter. And that is, legal's preference would be if the council simply decides to do one of two things. Either take it all out, and then we can put it back in at final, before final, or leave it all in, and we can amend it out before final. Either way, that's the easiest, cleanest way to do it.
Oh, yeah. No doubt. But they got some folks up here who want to see it done differently.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's easy and clean.
All right.
You know, all in or all out. I think that's what Mr. Robidoux said. That's what Mr. Terrio said. But at the end of the day, Mr., you know, because of Mr. Bellard's amendment, Mr. Nakken saying he wants to do it this way.
Right.
Ms. Abert is considering saying, let's not even address it tonight. Let's wait until the man could come back.
Right.
So, yeah, that's definitely some easy.
Right. I guess my assumption was that the reason I made that suggestion was simply to allow for, during those two weeks, to have Councilman Bellard's thoughts, to have Councilman Nakken's thoughts, to have Ms. Councilwoman Liz Abert's thoughts, to create that conglomerate of an amendment acceptable to all and get it in at one time. I simply, I wasn't suggesting that, you know, it's either all or in.
If a council member wants to offer that, that would be a blessing.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead.
Well, but again, there's things on the floor already, which is, I thought what we was gonna address.
Right.
But, yeah, if a council person was to say, leave it as it is, and let you come forward with some amendments within these next two weeks, that would be fine. Or take everything out, and let you come forward a new ordinance in two weeks, that would be fine. But unfortunately, that's not what a councilman had asked for yet.
Right.
When does it come up for final? What's the date?
Mr. Chairman, you have a current amendment that takes it all out right now, that you have not yet voted on. So you can either accept that amendment and vote for it, and it all goes out, or you could defeat that amendment, and it stays as is, and then you can pass the ordinance for intro, and then you have the two weeks. And it can either be amended correctly, or eliminated, or whatever.
At that point, you're speaking to Mr. Nakken, and you're speaking to Ms. Abert based on people who have expressed something. Because what you just said is that if Mr. Bellard's amendment is successful, Mr. Nakken don't consider your amendment. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna censor anyone or tell anyone not to consider their amendment. And I'm afraid that's what we hinging on by saying, if Mr. Bellard's amendment is successful, well, then it's all out, and then let everybody go fix it up in two weeks. So he speaks, you know, that's the suggestion to make it clean and easy. But that's gonna be each council person's preference at that point. But I did hear you also say this. From a legal standpoint, you advise that you think it would be better to take up the first one that has come up before moving on. And that's fine, but let the record reflect that that does not stop anyone from coming back with an additional amendment after that vote is taken. So with that said, Mr. Nakken, I'm not gonna allow your amendment at this time. We're gonna go back to...
And you're wrong for that, man. I just got, I got a question. When is final for this? What's the date?
July 2nd.
Okay. I'm gonna be in town. If it was July 2nd, I had an issue, then I was gonna put my amendment on the table. All right. For $5, I'll let you out.
All right. Don't offer me no money. So now, we're gonna go back to Councilman Bellard and Councilman Lewis's amendment, and we have taken the public comment on that amendment already. That's what just concluded. The clerk has identified some individuals who have indicated that they're in support of it. So we have addressed all of the public. Council discussion has been closed on it, because we went to public. So we're gonna vote on Councilman Bellard's amendment with Councilman Lewis second, basically removing all of the references to electrical vehicles and electrical vehicle parking stations. Okay? Everybody's clear on that? Y'all got that? So that's what we're voting on at this time. Let's vote on that amendment, please.
District 7? District 8? District 9? District 1?
No.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to amend fails.
Okay. Is anyone interested in making an amendment? Otherwise, it stays in. Okay? All right. There is no one from the council looking to take any action at this time. So now, we will open up the floor to blue cards for the ordinance as it has been amended.
Simon Mahan?
He left.
Robert Gercio?
Just wanted to get back to what I think is the focus. Give you a quick history. I've been downtown since 2002. I have several businesses. One of them is parking lots. Okay? I do know a little bit about this situation, and I think that the heart of this ordinance is critical to the long-term, short-term success of downtown Lafayette. Nobody thinks about parking until they can't find a parking spot, or until they have problems associated with parking. And it's one of the largest oversights in the consideration of burgeoning downtown. It's a difficult prospect, too. We do need more parking. We need private-public partnerships. The Lemoine Company would be a good option, that end of downtown, the gateway entrance. There's another piece of property, the advertiser properties, that would be another great candidate for a parking garage development project. The city needs to develop their little parking lots, and whether they want to put their own buildings and put them into commerce, or whether they want to sell them and raise money to pay for these public-private partnerships. The city needs to leverage its assets to a greater extent so that we can move forward with downtown Lafayette. So when I talk about putting in place, implementing progressive best practices, the parking benefit district is a big one. Hospitality Zone, which is otherwise known as Entertainment District, is another big one. Okay? These are not, this is not Robert Gercio. This is research done by the foremost expert in the field in North America, Responsibility Hospitality Institute. Jim Peters, ironically, was here before the streetscape was done, or had just been done, and offered his services, and we didn't hire him. Had we hired Jim Peters and RHI back then, in like 2000, we would have saved the city of Lafayette millions and millions of dollars, and probably for an investment of $50,000. So I'm not here to bemoan the situation. I'm just making a simple point, and that is, is we need to invest in downtown to get a greater return on that investment. Spend money where you make money. That's kind of a cliche for entrepreneurs. Well, I think the city needs to apply that same logic to their own assets. What do we have? What can we use? How can we use it better? How can we make more money? Parking is one of these areas that it's already paid for. It's already paved. You don't really have to invest any money, because it's really just a two-week payroll float. It's basically cash on the barrel, so you're generating the funds. You don't have to wait to receive the income. So you instantly can use this cash to better downtown, or to put it wherever you want to put it. A parking benefit district creates a revolving fund whose a percentage of that money goes to benefit the downtown district. Spend money where you generate money. The problems pay for the solutions. So we have a security detail budget. Mr. Boudreaux, I know you've been here for a long time. Every time we have the security detail budget come up when we want more money, you point out, guys, when are we gonna stop asking for more money? Well, instead of asking that question, what I think we need to start asking is the question, how can we make more money from city assets so that we don't need to ask for more money? And this is the problem that we have downtown. We have, we're stuck in a reactive cycle in response. So the chief has to do his job. He's got to protect the public safety. But what we don't have is a budget in the beginning that's administered by the people who understand the problems in downtown Lafayette, who are there seven days a week, five days a week, three nights a week, till 2, 3 a.m. on a regular recurring basis. Tens of thousands of hours I've spent downtown, you know? So what we need to do is, we need to, again, we need to invest in this parking solution so we can raise money, so that we can pay for these expenses that we have that have been ongoing for a long time. And then we need to use a best practice that other people have established to manage that fund. The other thing I wanted to say is, if we want to do something really cool in downtown Lafayette, let LUS lease the top of the parking garage, put solar panels over it, and have electric car charging stations up there that you can add as you go. And you can sell power to the businesses that are in that area, which it's power-trapped, so you can't add more power in that area.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And again, two citizens signed in, did not wish to speak, but supports the inclusion of the electric vehicle provision.
Okay. All right. And Simon did not make it back. Okay. All right. So now, we're gonna vote on the ordinance as it has been amended.
District 7? District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Go.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
No.
Motion to introduce as amended is approved.
And, Mr. President, we appreciate the offer that you have made, and we would ask that stays in place. There were some members who expressed some concerns and would like more information. So now that this has been introduced by final, if we could be in receipt of that, we'd appreciate it. Excuse me, gentlemen, next item.
Ordinance 120, 2017, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council changing certain polling locations as authorized and in accordance with the applicable provisions of Louisiana Election Code, LARS 18:1 et cetera.
Motion by Nakken. Second by Castillo. Him and Lewis kind of sound alike sometimes. All right. There's a proposed amendment to replace the new polling location, which was to be Holy Family Catholic School, to the Martin Luther King Recreational Center. Instead, again, this came due to the fact that the Diocese of Lafayette did not approve that as a polling location. So I'll entertain a motion on that. Nakken?
Second.
Cook?
Cook and Nakken.
All right. At this time, we're gonna open the floor for council discussion. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, on that particular item there, I just want the public to know that we tried our best, because we know that the Sheriff Department is closing, or did close, from our understanding, did close. So there was no other place for people in those precincts to have a place to vote. We tried using the Holy Family School, but for some unknown reason, not unknown reason, but the reason is that there were some problems with the utilities. So it was unfortunate that they have to relocate to vote as at the King Center. Again, we will be trying to find, in fact, I will be trying to find another area that would be more suitable for my constituents to vote at another location. But until now, I think the next voting time is in October or November, both, both of them. So hopefully, we'll find a place right after that for the constituents to have a choice of voting somewhere else. Okay, thanks. Just want everyone to know that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Any blue cards on this matter? Okay. All right. We'll vote on the amendment that was made by Nakken, second by Cook, please.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Okay. Now, we'll vote on the ordinance as it has been amended.
District 8?
Yes.
District 9?
Stop messing.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 7? Motion to introduce as amended is approved.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.